Good evening, I'd like to call to order the June 5th Town Council Meeting. Madam Clerk?
So, Councillors are present?
Thank you. Please stand for a salute to the flag. Would Representative Washington lead us in a salute to the flag, please?
I would. Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we are on to Item 3, Recognizations, Awards and Memorials. And we have, it's the season for proclamations. We have three proclamations this evening. Councillor Parker, would you start with the gasp proclamation, please?
Proclamation recognizing National Prevention Week 2018. Whereas substance abuse and mental health are behavioral health issues that affect overall health and well-being, and whereas the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, S.A.H.H.S.A., created an Observance Week to raise awareness of substance abuse and mental health across the country, and whereas while behavioral health issues are of national concern, National Prevention Week is an opportunity to raise awareness locally, and whereas the data collected from the 2018 Groton Youth Survey shows that 23% of current 11th and 12th graders drank in the past 30 days, 28% have tried marijuana, 8% have tried prescription drugs without authorization, 64% of teens say that their parent or guardian has clear rules against them using drugs, 15% report feeling sad most of the time, 19% feel lonely, 30% report recent anxiety, and 14% have felt depressed recently. And whereas although the survey shows an overall decrease in substance abuse, we have the power to improve and more importantly, change lives through National Prevention Week, and when people become more aware and able to recognize the signs of mental health problems and substance abuse, and whereas we in Groton need to recognize the seriousness of behavioral health issues in-out community, the power of prevention, and the tireless efforts of those working to make a difference. Now therefore be it resolved, on behalf of the Groton Town Council, I am asking the citizens of Groton, Connecticut to join me in observing National Prevention Week during the week of May 13, 2018, dated at Groton, Connecticut, this 5th day of June 2018, signed by Mayor of Groton Town, Patrice Granatowsky.
Thank you, Councillor Parker. We have a proclamation recognizing Academy Point at Mystic. Councillor Schmidt?
Whereas the men and women who have served and currently are serving in the armed forces of the United States of America have made major contributions toward the preservation of this nation and its people, and whereas the services performed by these millions of gallant Americans have demonstrated the willingness of our nation to meet the challenges of those forces wishing to subjugate individual determination through armed conflict, and whereas the nation and the free world are eternally grateful for the contributions of American veterans, both men and women, toward the advancement of the cause of an honorable world peace, and whereas the Congress of the United States of America has designated the 11th day of November of each year as Veterans' Day, and whereas the residents and staff of Academy Point at Mystic will honor and remember all veterans on June 6, 2018, during a ceremony rededicating our Veterans' Wall of Honor Memorial, now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council of the Town of Groton does hereby pay tribute to the resident veterans of Academy Point of Mystic for their many selfless contributions, and congratulates Academy Point at Mystic on the dedication of its Veterans' Wall of Honor Memorial, dated at Groton, Connecticut, this 6th day of June 2018, and signed by Patrice Granatowsky, Mayor of the Town of Groton.
Thank you, Councillor Schmidt. And the final proclamation is a proclamation recognizing Kenneth Smith, who happens to be one of my students. Whereas Kenneth Smith has been an active participant with the Boy Scouts of America for over 13 years, and whereas Kenneth's career began in 2005 with Troop 13, where he had advanced through the ranks achieving the highest award as Eagle Scout, and whereas Kenneth has participated in a variety of scouting activities, earning many merit badges and serving in leadership positions, and whereas Kenneth enjoyed hiking, camping, and fishing with his fellow scouts and learning lifesaving techniques and leadership skills, and whereas Kenneth plans to continue his career with the Boy Scouts of America as a junior assistant scoutmaster, and whereas having achieved the rank of Eagle Scout, Kenneth will be honored at an Eagle Scout Court of Honor to be held on May 26, 2018, at the Mystic Groton Gun Club. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council of the Town of Groton, on behalf of the citizens of Groton, does commend Kenneth Smith for achieving the rank of Eagle Scout, the highest rank in boy scouting, and extends wishes for continued success, dated at Groton, Connecticut, this 26th day of May, 2018. Thank you, Madam Clerk, for providing the proclamations for us, those are very nice. All right, at this time, we need to recess for a public hearing on a grant, so I'm going to recess at, let's see, it is 6:39, recessing at 6:39, and we are having a public hearing on the Bill Memorial Library Neighborhood Assistance Act Program Application. This is 2018-0097 on your agenda. Hello?
Hello. My name is Susan Cullen. I'm from Community Development here for the Town of Groton. This is Wendy Connell from the Bill Memorial Library, and we're here before you to hold the public hearing for the Neighborhood Assistance Act Tax Credit Program. The Bill Memorial Library has had our only application for this year, and what the Assistance Act does is it requires us to come before you in a public hearing setting. There are several different things that have to go on in terms of process. A business can ask for someone to give them tax credits for a number of different programs. In this case, the Bill Memorial Library has actually asked for an energy conservation project to their heating, ventilation, and air conditioning systems. So, in that case, they can actually get 100% of, for an energy conservation program. And so what they do is they go out and find a partner, and the partner, it's typically Groton Utilities in this area, at least it has been in the past, and they purchase those tax credits, they get to do their project, the project in this case is for $63,600, and then they match that up, and there is a $5 million cap for the program for the state of Connecticut, but they typically prorate it if they get that high. So, we're here tonight in case you have any questions, and Wendy's here in case you'd like to know anything about the library or about their plans.
Are there any questions before we open it up in case there are citizens who wish to speak on this particular issue? No questions for staff? Okay, are there any citizens, Madam Clerk, that wish to speak on the public hearing?
No, they haven't yet.
Are there any citizens who would like to speak on this particular public hearing? Seeing none. I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry. Could you come forward, Ms. Jeliney? If you could just state your name and address for the record, please.
Jane Jeliney, 899 Shenacasset Road, Groton City. As a longtime educator, I've enjoyed working on, with Wendy and the rest of the members of Bill Memorial Library Board of Directors. The library is an unsung hero in the city. It is an absolutely beautiful place, and all kinds of activities are made available to people of all ages. Great numbers of kids particularly enjoy all sorts of programs there throughout the year. I want to add that the need for this grant was, came to light, with no pun intended, this morning, when the ladies turned the lights on, they sensed there was a fire, smoking problem, in the electricity. So it ended up with electricians there looking at the problem, and it's something that really needs to be fixed quickly. So timing is everything. I can't say enough good things about the library. It's a very vital place. I really woke up in the spring at a meeting after the Easter season activity there for kids. 420 children attended that, and that's just one event that's held throughout the year. So please do consider approving this grant, it's extremely important to the people of Groton.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, seeing no other citizens, we will adjourn the public hearing at 6:43, and reconvene the Town Council Meeting. So right now, we are on to Item 4. Are you ready, Madam Clerk, are we good? Okay, so we're on Item 4, Receipt of Citizens' Petitions, Comments, and Concerns. This is the portion of the council agenda where the council welcomes comments from citizens. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. Town councilors will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation, and can respond during the responses to citizens' petitions portion of the Town Council Meeting. Citizens should make their presentations from the lectern and state their names and addresses for the record. Madam Clerk, are there any citizens? Please come forward. If you could just state your name and address, thank you.
Portia Bordelon, 159 Shenacasset Parkway, Groton. I just wanted to step up here, I did already send an email out to all the town councilors in regards to the vacant position for the Town Council that was recently vacated by Rich Marasik. I just wanted to put forward that I feel I am an awesome candidate for this position, I feel I bring a lot to the table. I do not seat on the agenda tonight unless you're planning to suspend the rules and vote somebody in. I wanted to speak openly because I did gain the support of the Democratic Committee, which I think had never been done. Another great candidate, Cutter Oliver, had 17 votes to my 24. I just wanted to openly speak up here because I feel like I should, and that I wanted to reach out again publicly and say that I hope that the Town Council would consider putting me on the Town Council and taking the recommendation from the Democratic Committee. Once again, per the charter at the last meeting that was discussed, it is not the Town Committee that makes the final decision, I understand it comes down to the Town Council, but I do feel like I'm an active member in this community, attend a majority of the meetings, and deserve a fair shot. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens that wish to speak? Okay. Are there responses to citizens' petitions, comments, and concerns? Okay, we are on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under Item 6 are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will take place unless cause is shown prior to the time council votes on the motion to adopt. So this is the approval of the minutes and the administrative items and the deletions from the referral list. Moved by O'Bree.
Second.
Seconded by Atwater. Is there any discussion on the consent calendar? Seeing none, all those in favor of moving the consent calendar say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, so moved unanimously. We are on to Communications and Reports, Town Councilors. Councillor Parker?
Yes, I attended along with Mayor Granatowsky the Noank Memorial Day Parade at the request of Fred Kent. Thank you for inviting us, we had a great time walking with everyone, seeing everyone out there, and we also walked on Mystic Parade, and both of these parades were on May 28, 2000, that's all I have to report.
Councillor Franco?
I attended the Board of Enbating, where they were giving out many awards, including Teacher of the Year, and it was wonderful to see and hear all the great things going on in our schools.
Councillor Heath?
Last week, I attended the Mystic Chamber Groton Business Update with Councillor O'Bree and Town Manager John Burke, and it was fantastic.
Councillor O'Bree?
There was a breakfast, it's an annual GBA event, and it's now done in conjunction with the Mystic Chamber, and I will say the relationship made it so, it was a much better presentation, and the attendance was up for it, and the speakers were excellent, and it was all very positive for Groton's future. The other thing, you know, the end of the world, I was actually the guest at the roller derby on Saturday night down at Avery Point, and it was a lot of fun.
Councillor Atwater? Councillor Schmidt?
I have received two telephone calls from the citizens. One is in reference to the traffic problem in Mystic and the difficulties of just proceeding through the town and the backup of traffic whenever the bridge goes up, and it's been so bad that we feel that actually this traffic problem exists in January as well as July, and that is something that needs to be addressed by the town if there is any kind of a solution to this. When a car door is opened, somebody crosses the street, all traffic stops, and it has become worse over time. It is no longer the summer season, it is a year-round problem. And the other problem is in reference to the telephone calls, the robo-calls that everybody's receiving. They are constant, they are daily, these are all calls that seem to be made from numbers that are no longer in service, and I wonder if there's anything people can do or should be doing to report these calls that they receive in order to alleviate the situation.
Councillors Zepari?
No reports.
I attended the parades that Councillor Parker mentioned in Noank and Mystic, and it was very nice, the Noank Parade in particular, there was very nice service at the cemetery where Mr. Nault spoke, Captain Nault spoke, it was very nice. And I also attended the Golf Advisory Board last evening and had a communication from a constituent who had a window broken by a golf ball, and the golfer did not come to the house and own that he had broken the guy's window, and he wasn't happy, and so I brought that concern with me to the Golf Advisory Board.
Can I add something?
Yes.
I did attend the roller derby. I forgot, yeah, that was really good.
It was, right.
If you guys have an opportunity to go, it's a nice time to be there at the Avery Point, so.
Right, as I've been before, I didn't go last time, but my, actually, one of my mild-mannered English teacher friends is in the roller derby, so it's kind of interesting, it's entertaining. Clerk of the Representative Town Meeting?
The Representative Town Meeting will be meeting for the regular meeting on June 13, at the Groton Senior Center at 7:30, they do have business.
Clerk of the Council?
Since you asked, dog licensing has returned every June, the month of June, June 1st to June 30th is the time for you, if you are a dog owner, six months or older, that's the golden age, to bring your rabies and proof of altering, if it's been spayed or neutered, to your town clerk. And this happens every year, so it's good for a year, so it goes from July, actually July 1st to June 1st, and it's the month of June we're actually licensing. So, the fee for a dog license in the state of Connecticut, it's not just the town, it's $8 for a spayed or neutered dog, or $19 for an unaltered dog. If you miss the deadline of June 30th, you can still register your dog, please do, but you will be assessed a dollar a month fee in addition to the licensing fee.
And that's in your office at 45 Fort Hill Road?
It is, 45 Fort Hill Road, right? You can mail it in, you don't have to come in, you can mail in. We do send out reminder postcards only to those who had registered the previous year, it's kind of defeating, but I did plenty of surveys over the years and really have decided that we must send those postcards, even though it costs about $550 with the printing and postage, but I'm certain that people would forget, and then they'd be upset that they weren't reminded. So, it's not like a tax bill, we're not required to send it out, but I think it's a good idea.
So if they walk into your office, the paperwork is there?
They walk, the paperwork is, paperwork is saved in the database.
Okay.
So we don't keep anything physical, it's all electronic, and so if they do need to show any information, they should bring it, if they don't, we, you know, we're pretty good about calling the vets while they're standing there getting the current information.
Thank you. Town Manager?
Hello. One, we received notice today from the Government Finance Officers Association that we're being awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for Fiscal Year-end 2017 CAFER, so congratulations to Cindy Landry and finance staff for their hard work on that. So it's the highest level rating you can get from the GFao, so it's very good. She seemed very excited. She does a fantastic job. I'm going to mention that at our 26th June Cow meeting, I'll have TPS group come and talk about retiree COLAs and retirement options, so if anybody's watching and they're interested in the retiree COLAs, that's the meeting to come to.
And that's the actuary, the new actuary?
The actuary, right, the new actuary. Eileen Duggan will probably be, will be coming to that meeting also, our town attorney, to talk about, to give an update on the Groton 2020 Plan and what's happening with that, so she'll be there then. Reminder of the joint city-town meeting next Monday at 6:00 PM at the city. And I believe we're not going to have the Tuesday meeting, we don't have anything at this point for the agenda, if that's okay, that's the plan, we'll just do the Monday meeting.
So it's Monday, June 11th at 6 o'clock?
Correct.
At the city chambers?
Correct.
Because we're going to alternate back and forth for our quarterly meetings.
I attended the Navy Exchange Store ribbon cutting for the remodel last week, which was really good, and a very neat store, I hadn't been in there before, so that was pretty neat. Rita, just mentioning on the traffic in Mystic, you know, with Route 1, it's hard because it's a state road, you know, I'm on the traffic authority, and we do what we can, we get a lot of requests for the side streets, but there's not much we can do other than pass things on to the state for the Route 1 proper. I know things get passed on a lot to them for that. And then I just wondered, you've mentioned the phone, you know, if you're registered on the National Do Not Call Registry for numbers to be blocked from calling you?
That does absolutely nothing.
Okay. But, and then I moved into a new house last week, and I had a fantastic Realtor helping me with that, and it was really good. I'm happy to be there. So, that's all I have.
The only Realtor you ever need.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so that's Item 7. So, committee?
I would like to make a motion that we nominate Andre Baumgartner as the Town Council Representative for the vacant seat.
So that requires, because it's not on the agenda, that requires a suspension of the rules. Is there a motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
Motion to suspend by Heath, seconded by Parker. All those in favor of suspending the rules to vote on a nominee for the vacant seat, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. So then, Councillor Schmidt, did you wish to make a nomination?
Yes, I would like to nominate Andre Baumgartner for the position. Andre knows our town very well, having campaigned in every district in Groton. He was the very youngest representative in state government where he represented the interests of Groton in the state legislature. He always called me, when I was the mayor, to make sure that any state-level problem that Groton was experiencing was being brought up and taken care of in the House of Representatives and in the various state departments. He has gained valuable knowledge of the ongoing needs and solutions for our town. At the same time, he has shown that he works well with both sides of the aisle and that he respects opposing opinions, which in our various meetings he carefully considered before reaching any decisions. Andre represents the growing and vocal youth force in our community and in our region. He has the knowledge of and the experience in government that we need. Please join me in this consideration.
Is there a second? Seconded by Atwater. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will vote on the nomination of Andre Baumgartner to fill the vacant Town Council seat. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. So that passes seven to one to zero with O'Bree in opposition. Thank you. Madam Clerk, when would he be sworn in at our next council meeting?
Well, he can come in at any time he's sworn in. I'll send a letter to notify him that he's been appointed and for him to come in to get sworn in, if he-
He can just head to your clerk's office?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So we're on to Committee Reports, Personnel and Appointments. Chairman Heath?
No Committee, no report.
Rules?
No Committee, no report.
And Committee of the Whole, I don't know why this is on here, I don't understand why, because everything we're doing has gone through Committee of the Whole, so, all right, new business, nine, fourth quarter transfers. So are we beginning with Parker?
Mm-hmm.
2018-0090-FYE, 2018, fourth quarter transfers.
Resolution for FYE 2018, fourth quarter transfers, whereas the Town Charter provides for supplemental appropriations to adopted budgets and transfers from the contingency function during the year, and whereas the Town Charter also provides for the transfer of funds from one departmental function to another departmental function during the last three months of the fiscal year, and whereas the transfers are necessary and represent unforeseen or unexpected expenditures at the time the fiscal FYE 2018 budget was adopted, and now therefore be it resolved that the transfers totaling $29,800 be transferred from contingency number 1074 to the general fund department's functions, and transfer of $10,000 or more are referred to the RTM for approval. Legislative policy number 10018-5290 of $15,000, legal fees and ad for Charter Revision Commission, Town Clerk number 100505109 of $8,300, retirement of long-term employee, executive management number 101005117 of $6,500, expenses related to hiring of new town manager, and I refer this to the RTM according to 6.5.3.
So move. Moved by Parker, seconded by Franco. Is there a discussion, or would you like to ask Finance Director Landry any questions about this? Yes.
Come on, back up.
This came through in April 10th.
I, it did not really enumerate the amount for the expenses related to hiring of the new town manager, unless that's the executive management.
Yes.
That's the same thing, only just in a different way.
Go ahead, Councillor O'Bree.
Where it says legal fees, ad for Charter Revision Commission, do we have a number for that? Is that the $8,300?
15,000.
15,000.
The descriptions are underneath the account numbers.
Maybe tap it over.
Which is, it says legislative policy.
That's where the charter revision was budgeted, under legislative policy, the cost center eight refers to charter revision.
Okay, and the retirement of long-term employees?
That was from the town clerk's office?
Right. That's the $8,300?
Right. Yes.
Oh, it was confusing.
Yeah, you need to make it one sentence.
Okay.
We'll note that.
I'll note that for next time.
Oh, yeah, I forgot.
It looks fine on our program, it just didn't pronounce very nicely.
So is everyone clear about the amount? Councillors Zepari, did you have a question?
Well, the only thing I'd say is we've gone over this in Committee of the Whole, there's nothing new here.
Correct.
Let's move the question, we'll move on.
Is there a second to move the question?
Second.
Motion to move the question by Zepari, seconded by Schmidt, all those in favor of moving the question, say aye.
Aye.
Two? Only two in favor of moving the question? Opposed? Unopposed? Okay, so there were more than two in favor of moving the question?
I said aye, I'm sorry, I didn't speak up.
All right, can you raise your hand if you're in favor of moving the question? One, two, three. Opposed? One, two, three, four. Abstaining? We're only getting seven votes here, people. So it fails regardless, it fails, so we can still have further discussion. Does anyone else have questions for the Finance Director? Seeing none, we'll vote. Yes.
Because this was from April 10th, in my memory, I mean, this was back from April 10th, in my memory from then, there's been a lot of votes. So the $15,000 was for the attorney, and how much, do you recall what the ad was? How much that cost the town?
I don't think I have that. I'm sorry to put you on the spot. Let me get another packet. I'm not sure that I have that breakdown, but I'm going to check to see. That's okay.
You wanted to add for the charter revision?
Yes.
Yeah, there's a lot. There's more.
Do you need to grab a drink? You okay?
No, I'm sorry, I don't have the breakdown for the ad.
Madam Clerk, do you recall?
I've cut a lot of, a lot of bills, it's more, it's more than just one.
Okay.
Oops, let me cancel that. I'm sorry, hang on, I think I've Googled those charter revision ads, opened. It was huge, it was over $4,000, just one of them.
You had to print the whole thing?
Just the changes that were made. And on my computer, so this isn't my computer, so it doesn't want to open. Yes, open it. There's another one for 145,00, $145, I mean, I have a lot of charter revision ads, but the big one was the whole thing. And then-
So you'd say approximately-
But it's really, the most expensive in there is legal fees.
So possibly, you're saying 4,000 for one ad?
Oh, yeah, there's definitely-
So we're looking at like about 5,000 approximately for advertisements?
For all of the ads.
Okay, thank you.
I think that was a full-page ad that you had to put in, right?
Right.
Close to it, yeah.
It was very tiny print.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
And it's very expensive to put that size of an ad in a day.
And we can't put that online and just have it that way?
Oh, I did, but it doesn't-
As a reference, instead of printing it all in?
It's actually, the statutes haven't caught up to today's-
Technology.
Technology, and so it still says in a newspaper with wide circulation, well, we don't have such a thing anymore. You know, the readership on the day is under 5,000, I think, for the town of Groton, so.
Okay. Thank you. Did you have questions about the other things, or you sat through?
I'm good with that.
Anybody else? It's at Midwest Nice. All right, if there's no further discussion, we will vote on 2018-0090-FYE 2018, fourth quarter transfers. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. 2018-0109-FYE 2018, suspense list. Counsel Franco, please.
A resolution establishing the fiscal year 2018 suspense list, whereas state law requires that once a year, that once a year a list shall be compiled of taxes that should be suspended, and whereas the accounts which have been determined as uncollectible have been contacted multiple times with no response, and whereas placing uncollected items in the suspense list helps avoid wasted money and staff time, and whereas the taxpayers remain liable. For all amounts that are placed in the suspense list, now therefore be it resolved that the following amounts to be added to the suspense list is reported to the Town Council. Town, 500,581 dollars.
Eighty-four.
Did I say eighty-four?
Eighty, you said eighty-one.
Yeah.
Sorry.
500,584.76, Sewer District, 989.61, Mumford Cove Association, 17 cents, for a total of So, I so moves.
Moved by Franco and seconded by Heed. Any discussion on moving this suspense list? Seeing none, all those in favor of FYE 2018-0109-FYE 2018 suspense list, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. Counselor Heed, 2018-0123 Sustainable Connecticut Certification Program, please.
Resolution supporting participation in the Sustainable Connecticut Municipal Certification Process, whereas Sustainable Connecticut is a comprehensive statewide, action-oriented, voluntary certification program built by and for municipalities with the vision that Sustainable Connecticut communities strive to be thriving, resilient, collaborative, and forward-looking, and whereas Sustainable Connecticut is designed to boost local economies, help municipal operations become more efficient, reduce operating costs, and provide grants and additional support to municipalities, and whereas the Town of Groton embraces an ongoing process of working toward greater sustainability, now therefore be it resolved by the Town Council, author, resolved by the Town Council authorizes the Director of the Office of Planning and Development Services, or his or her designated to serve as the Town's, Town of Groton Sustainable Contact, sorry, Sustainable Connecticut Contact Person for the Sustainable Connecticut Municipal Certification Process, and authorizes him or her to complete municipal registration on behalf of Town of Groton, and be it further resolved that an advisory sustainability team to be comprised of no more than five members of town staff and representatives of other agencies or groups appointed by the town manager is hereby established, and be it further resolved that the first meeting of the sustainability team will be held within 90 days of passing this resolution, and that their sustainability team shall be, shall meet as frequently as needed, but no less than twice per year, and be it further resolved that the sustainability team shall report annually to the Town Council on the progress of its activities towards Sustainable Connecticut Certification, with any reports and/or presentations made publicly available. I so move.
Second. Moved by Heed and seconded by Parker. Is there any discussion on the Sustainable, Sustainable Connecticut Certification Program? Seeing none, all those in favor of 2018-0123 Sustainable Connecticut Certification Program, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. We're onto 2018-0127. Madam Clerk, how much of this dues, does Counsel O'Bree need to read for us? Just the introduction?
Well, it is an introduction and-
Probably the final result.
Oh, and then the final result on the next page. So read the, all caps, and then flip it over, and there's a resolve at the top, please. Thank you.
Introduction of an ordinance to establish hours of operation for BYOB establishments. Be ordained, be it ordained by the Town Council of the Town of Groton. Resolve that the Town Council will hold a public hearing on a bring-your-own-bottle BYOB ordinance on June 26 at 6:30 PM in the Town Hall Annex, Community Room 1. I think it was appropriate that I read that.
Okay.
I so move.
Moved by O'Bree, seconded by Atwater. Is there any discussion on setting the public hearing for the, setting the hours of operation for BYOB establishments? Seeing none, all those in favor of 2018-0127 ordinance to establish operations for BYOB establishments, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. Counsel Atwater, 2018-0131, please.
Resolution approving a grant of economic assistance funds to Rogers Development LLC. Whereas the town has received an application from Rogers Development LLC for a grant from the Town of Groton Economics Assistance Fund to help defray infrastructure costs associated with constructing 19 residential units at 10 Fort Hill Road, and whereas documented infrastructure costs estimated total over $83,000 for sewer line installation and roadway repair, and whereas the requested fund would facilitate creation of housing in Groton, and whereas it has been estimated that taxes to the town would increase from approximately 3,000 pre-improvements to approximately 56,000 post-improvements, and whereas the Town of Groton Economic Development Commission has recommended approval of awarding an amount of $41,940 towards the infrastructure costs, now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council approves an Economic Assistance Fund Grant awarded of $41,940 to Rogers Development LLC for sewer line installation and road repair, infrastructure costs at 10 Fort Hill Road, to be paid on reimbursement basis after satisfying utility and road specifications, addressing road access beautification, proof of payment to the contractor, and after sign as posted indicating the project was developed, was helped by the Town of Groton Economics Assistance Fund. I so move.
Second. Moved by Atwater and seconded by Schmidt. Is there any discussion on this Economic Assistance Fund Grant? Again, everything's been discussed in COW, so if it seems like we're just rubber-stamping, we've actually gone through all this in great detail. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of 2018-0131, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. Counselor Schmidt, 2018-0132, the ARP Challenge Grant Senior Center.
A resolution authorizing the town manager to apply for the AARP Community Challenge Grant for a Senior Center Without Limits Program, whereas the Senior Center would like to apply for grant funds in the amount of $3,400 from the AARP Community Challenge Grant Program, and whereas the grant will fund the technology materials to offer the Senior Center Without Limits Program and purchase laptops and iPads, now therefore be it resolved that the town manager or his designee is authorized to apply for the AARP Community Challenge Grant for a Senior Center Without Limits Program. I so move.
Second. Moved by Schmidt, seconded by Zepary. Any discussion on this grant? Seeing none, all those in favor of 2018-0132 ARP Challenge Grant Senior Center, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. Counselors Zepary, 2018-0135 Establishment of Tax Rate for General Fund, FYE 2019, please.
Resolution establishing tax rate for general fund taxes due on July 1, 2018, whereas the representative town meeting has approved a general fund budget for fiscal year ending June 30, 2019, providing for expenditure appropriations totaling $125,856,730. And whereas the Town Council estimates cash revenue exclusive of fiscal year 2019 current property taxes will total $38,359,146. Now therefore be it resolved that $0.00 is hereby appropriated as fund balance available as of July 1, 2018, to partially meet the expenditure appropriations contained in FYE 2019 general fund budget, and be it further resolved that $87,497,584 is the amount that needs to be raised from property taxes, and be it further resolved that the tax rates for, for taxes due July 1, 2018 is hereby established as 24.17 mils per $1,000 of assessed valuation to raise $87,497,584. The, I so move.
Second. Moved by Perry, seconded by Heed. Is there a discussion? And this is the discussion we had in the COW prior to this at 6 o'clock. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of 2018-0135 Establishment of the Tax Rate for General Funds, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. Counsel Parker, 2018-0136, please.
Establishment of Tax Rate for Mumford Cove District Fund, FYE 2019. Resolution establishing tax rate for Mumford Cove District Fund due July 1, 2018, whereas the representative town meeting has approved a Mumford Cove District Fund budget for fiscal year ending June 30, 2019, providing for expenditure appropriations totaling $21,043, and whereas the Town Council estimated cash revenue exclusive of FYE 2019 current property taxes will total $0, now therefore be resolved that $0 is hereby appropriated as fund balance available as of July 1, 2018, to partially meet expenditure appropriations contained in the FYE 2019 Mumford Cove District Fund budget, and be it further resolved that the tax rate for taxes due for Mumford Cove District Fund on July 1, 2018 is hereby established at 0.34 mils per $1,000 of assessed valuation to raise $21,043. I so move.
Second. Moved by Parker and seconded by Franco. Any discussion on setting the Mumford Cove rate? Seeing none, all those in favor of 2018-0136 Establishment of Tax Rate for Mumford Cove District Fund, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. Counselor Franco, is that where we left off?
Yes.
2018-0137, please.
Resolution establishing tax rate for Groton Sewer District Fund due July 1, 2018, whereas the representative town meeting has approved a Groton Sewer District Fund budget for fiscal year ending June 30, 2019, providing for expenditure appropriations totaling $803,455, and whereas the Town Council-
Forty-five.
Oh, my God, what did I say?
Fifty-five.
Forty-five. And whereas the Town Council estimated cash revenue exclusive of for year ending 2019, fiscal year ending 2019, current property taxes will total $15,500, now therefore be it resolved that $150,000 is hereby appropriated as fund balance available as of July 1, 2018, to partially meet expenditure appropriations contained in the fiscal year 2019 Sewer District Fund budget, and be it further resolved that the tax rate for taxes due for the Groton Sewer District Fund on July 1, 2018 is hereby established at .27 mils per $1,000 of assessed valuation to raise $637,945. I so move.
Second. Moved by Franco and seconded by Parker. Is there any discussion on 2018-0137? Seeing none, all those in favor of 2018-0137 Establishment of Tax Rate for Groton Sewer District Fund, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. Is there any other business to come before the council this evening? Yes?
I just wanted to mention that the petition that, from the Island View residents in Mystic had brought to your attention, Mayor, and whether or not something could be referred to one of your wonderful committees.
Mr. Burt, would you like to address that, please?
Tom Zanarene handles the, ultimately, at staff, we have an enforcement officer that looks into those things. He visited there last Friday. The storage container on site is permitted, so there's nothing that can be done about that. He did not find the property to be within the blight parameters of what we can take action on per our ordinance. However, he said the picture sent to us didn't quite match what was there, and I asked him, as a follow-up, I'd like to see the new pictures, but he's out of the office this week, so I'm waiting to get some follow-up information.
So you'll get back to us on what he finds? Thank you very much. Counsel O'Bree?
In reference to that, I'm hoping sometime whomever it's appropriate to talk with, that we could talk with them more about the blight regulations, because I do think personally from some of the things I've been involved in recently, they do need to be expanded to the backyard. And the only other thing I had is, I would like an update, perhaps at our next meeting, on what's being done at Par 4, what's been accomplished?
In terms of the CIP, in terms of what's been approved?
What was supposed to be done? The repairs that were being done.
Okay.
Bathrooms, the front of the building.
Right.
Stairway.
Right.
Stairway, yeah.
Right, the stairway's been now approved to go forward in the future, there's no money allotted for the bathrooms, and then I think they're still going out to bid on the restroom, but I can have Mark put a detail-
I'm sorry, that's what I meant, the restrooms.
I can have Mark Barry have staff put together a report on that.
Could I add to that? I would like to know how they came up with the handicap parking that they changed down there. They eliminated three parking places and put it where it's not near the door. To me, it doesn't make any sense.
I'll find out about that, too.
Thank you.
Counsel Franco?
Can I just mention that the Mystic Schooners are in town and now playing up at Fitch High School, so if any residents are looking for baseball, the college kids from all over the country are here and playing up at Fitch.
How do we find out more about that, Counsel Franco?
On their website.
Which is?
I don't have it right now, just Google Mystic Schooner Baseball, and it'll pop up.
Okay.
But they are up there, and I actually am hosting two of them, so.
Could I ask a question in reference to that?
Mm-hmm.
Would there be some way that we could find out if the Town of Groton ever recognized the gentleman that put all the money and effort into that ball field? I don't think we ever thanked him.
That's he might have.
It was, it was an anonymous donation.
So he wishes to remain anonymous?
It was an anonymous donation, and we didn't want recognition.
Gee, I saw his wife said to me, but okay.
That's what he, that was what was said publicly at a council meeting.
Hmm. Well, I may see them tonight.
Everyone wanted to thank, or her, the donor.
Yeah.
And we were told it was anonymous, and we didn't want recognition.
Okay, thank you.
The only other thing is we received an invitation to participate in the Fourth of July parade. Is there consensus that we would like to participate in the Fourth of July parade?
Yes.
Yes, okay, excellent. So I don't know what we need. Do we need to file an application with Parks and Rec, or how do we do this?
I'm not sure. I got here right after the parade last year.
Oh, okay.
Email to Jerry Logan.
Okay.
Email Jerry.
Yeah. There's a form online.
All right.
If you go to the GBA, or if you go to the Mystic Chamber, either one, I think you will find the application.
Actually, I have it. I could fill out the form if you want me to.
Oh, you have the form already? Okay.
Well, it's online, I saw it last night.
Excellent.
Sorry, Betsy.
He was formally invited to, by Jerry Logan. Right, so respond to him, and he'll place you where he places you.
Okay.
It doesn't work that way anymore. It goes to the GBA Chamber Division, and then it goes to Jerry, I believe. Whatever it says on the form, but I know they had to change it.
All right, Councilor Heed has agreed he will take care of getting us a spot in the parade.
Great.
Excellent. Is there any other business?
Oh, man, I forgot something again.
Councilor Parker?
I just want to make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Moved to adjourn by Parker, seconded by Schmidt. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, so moved unanimously. Here are adjournments at seven twenty-five.